It's four o'clock by the clock on the wall back there. I think we'll call the meeting of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission, the City of Waterloo, to order. This is our regular May first meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the May first 2018 agenda. And I should point out before we do that, that item D one, the vacation of sidewalk, request by Central Property Holdings LLC to vacate a portion of sidewalk along the west side of Clay Street and southwest side of Walnut Street, has been pulled from this month's agenda. So, I apologize if any of you are here for that, you'll have to come back next month. So, we'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
So, second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Pardon me. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April third, 2018. Those were mailed out as part of the packet that we received. And if there are no corrections or additions, I'll, we'll entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay?
Can we have a little bit of discussion? There would be...
Okay. Well, it's moved and seconded, now discussion.
Okay. There, there should be some corrections of grammatical errors and unfinished sentences, things like that, punctuation.
You want to point them out, or?
Um, there, there's just several, there's several spots, so.
Okay.
Um, I just didn't want to take up the time.
Okay.
So, um, just make sure that those can be corrected.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That's carried. Next item is the financial report for March of 2018. Mr. Schrader, would you like to address that, please?
This is Schrader with staff. I apologize, I did not know I would be sitting in this chair until last minute, so I have not had a chance to look this over yet, but, uh, just skimming it over and I'm not seeing anything that's out of order. Um, if there are any specific questions, I will try to answer them. Well, it appears that we're at seventy-eight percent of our, of our budget.
Mm-hmm.
And expenses. Fifty-seven percent on the income side. And the income side does really fluctuate a lot with property sales, so.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion to approve. The financial report is presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay.
Point of order, point of order.
Sure.
This is Butch. Just to curiosity, is there somebody else still coming? Because we don't have a quorum. Just curious.
Five's a quorum.
Wait, one, two, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I wasn't counting you, Greg. Sorry. My apologies.
I could, yeah, well, we're not going into that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
We had two noes and one question mark, so this was all of the confirmed.
Sorry.
But it is a quorum.
Okay, now we come to oral presentations. If, and this is a time when anybody that would like to speak to the commission may come to the, to the podium, give us your name and where you live, and make a presentation of no more than three to five minutes on something that is not on today's agenda. If it's an agenda item that you're here for, you'll get your chance when that comes up. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to hearings. The time is now four oh five PM, and a hearing is scheduled on the request by Michael Dahl and Brian Kennett to rezone 2.74 acres of land from A1 Agricultural District to R1 One and Two Family Residence District to allow for future residential development located at forty-two, forty-five West Fourth Street. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial maps were mailed to each individual on this, on the attached list by regular mail on April seventeenth, 2018." We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion is carried. We have staff report.
Uh, this is Andaro's staff. Uh, this is a request to rezone 2.74 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 One and Two Family Residence District located at forty-two, forty-five West Fourth Street. Uh, purpose of the rezone is, uh, to allow for the development of low-density residential. Our request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding neighborhood or land use in the area, as it consists of low-density resident, residential development, with the exception of multiple family residences to the west along Skyline Drive. Uh, property is served by West Fourth Street from the north and south, is classified as a minor arterial. Uh, it would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular, vehicular and pedestrian traffic within the area. West San Martin Drive is about a quarter mile to the north, and West Charles Road is about three-quarters of a mile to the south, and both of those are classified as minor arterial streets. Uh, there is no public sidewalk located along the east side of West Fourth Street, uh, but there is sidewalk along the west side of the street. Uh, when the land is platted into lots in the future, uh, there will be a requirement, the dedication, that sidewalk is required and installed. Uh, the intent would be to have a sidewalk along the frontage of West Fourth Street to the north end of the property, and have a crossing to get across, uh, West Fourth Street to the west side. Uh, site has been zoned A1 since the adoption of the ordinance in February of nineteen sixty-nine. North is one and two family residence, zoned R3. South, single families, zoned R1. East, one and two family, R3. And west is single-family residences and multifamily residences, which are the timberline condos, zoned R1 and R3 RP Planned Residence District. Uh, the rezoning request would not appear to negatively impact drainage in the area. Uh, when it is platted, it will be a requirement that stormwater detention plan be included for the new subdivision. Uh, property is not located within a flood plain. Uh, there is no sanitary sewer located within the West Fourth Street, and the nearest eight-inch sanitary sewer is about three hundred feet to the south at the intersection of West Fourth and Hoff Road. Engineering indicated that the site would need to be served by this sewer by extending a new sewer northward to the property in question. Uh, West Fourth Street also has a twelve-inch storm sewer and four-inch drain tile, and there's a twelve-inch water main that comes along, comes northward along the east side of Fourth that is stubbed into the property. Future land use map does designate this area as low-density residential, and is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area. Uh, the R1 District is intended to provide for areas of the community which are suitable for low-density uses that are adjacent to residential, professional offices, or neighborhood commercial uses. Uh, currently, there is a house on the property that was constructed in nineteen nineteen along with three outbuildings. Uh, it is the intent of the owners to keep the existing farmhouse and outbuildings, and eventually plot the rest of the land for new residential development. Uh, rezoning the property to R1 District, uh, to allow for those new low-density development would appear to be in conformance and compatible with the surrounding area. When the land is platted in the future for the new developments, uh, the lots will need to meet the minimum requirements of the R1 District. Uh, minimum lot size, uh, for single families, nine thousand with a lot with a seventy-five measured at the building line, and the lot minimum requirements for two-family dwelling is ten thousand square feet, and a lot with eighty feet at the building line. Um, at this time, the applicant has not submitted a subdivision plat, and how they intend to subdivide the land quite yet. Uh, to staff's recommendation, to rezone, uh, from, uh, two-point seven-four acres from A1 to R1 located at forty-two, forty-five West Fourth Street be approved for the following reasons. Rezoning request would not appear to have negative impact upon the surrounding area, and the proposed residential zoning district would be consistent with residential development in the area. Request would not appear to have negative impact upon pedestrian or traffic conditions in the area with, and when the land is platted, more residential sidewalk will need, need to be extended in the area, and the request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for this area, which designates this area as, uh, low-density residential.
Okay, are there any questions for staff?
This is Schrader with staff. I just wanted to, uh, note that I am a resident of this neighborhood. I was one of the property owners that received notice within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Uh, no objection to the request, just wanted to put that on record, that I am a resident here.
Seeing no other, uh, questions, thank you. Is the applicant here, or somebody representing the applicant, would you like to come forward and give us, is there anything you'd like to say?
I can introduce myself, but only if there are questions. Uh, so, my name is Michael Dahl, this is Brian Kennett, and my daughter's joined us, kind of a learning experience, actually for all of us, but nonetheless, um, yeah, we're here just in case questions arose, or, or, uh...
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Do you have questions for the applicant? Guess you're getting off easy.
Wow. That usually doesn't happen. I have this black cloud usually follows me. It's out there, it's been raining.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, discussion amongst commissioners, or motion, or?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezone request, uh, for, to rezone 2.74 acres from A1 Agriculture to R1 One and Two Family Residence District. Um, with, there's no condition is noted, so.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye, if there's no further discussion.
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay. It's carried. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The next item on the agenda is, uh, the request by John Christman. Sorry, I need to start over. The time is now four thirteen, and a hearing is scheduled at this time, re, on the request by John Christman to rezone approximately 2.68 acres from R2 One and Two Family Residence District to R2 CZ, conditional zoning district, to allow for the development of an auction facility and art studio spaces located at seventeen twenty-one to seventeen twenty-nine Mulberry Street. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial maps were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on April eighteenth, 2018." We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Opposed, same sign. All right. Staff report.
This is Western with staff. Uh, the site is predominantly surrounded by residential uses, with the exception of a communications business and the human services campus on M2 Heavy Industrial District located to the southwest. It would appear that rezoning, the rezoning of the property to R2 CZ would not appear to have a negative impact on the area, as the building has existed since nineteen sixty-one without any noted issues. Uh, the second question is served by Mulberry Street, which is considered a local street, and Vinton Street, which is considered a minor arterial street. There are sidewalks along Mulberry Street and Vinton Street, north of Mulberry Street, but there are no sidewalks along Vinton Street, south of the Mulberry Street, and is included in the rezone request. Staff would recommend as a condition of the rezone request, that sidewalk would be required along Vinton Street. Off-street parking is available, therefore it would not appear that there would be a negative impact on the traffic in the area. Uh, the proposed rezone area is currently zone R2 One and Two Family Residence District, and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding properties are also zone R2, except the west, that west of Vinton Street, which is zone M2, uh, south of the Mulberry Street. Uh, the surrounding area is comprised of R2 One and Two Family dwellings, with the exception of the communications business and the human services campus on M2 Heavy Industrial District located to the southwest. It would appear that the rezoning of the property to R2 CZ would not appear to have a negative impact on the area. The homes in the area, on average, were built in the early nineteen hundreds. The existing structure was built in nineteen twenty-four. As a condition of the rezone request, there will be no outside storage allowed, so their, uh, screening would not appear to be needed as a part of this request. Uh, the site includes an existing structure, and there are no plans to expand the site with additional construction. Therefore, it would appear that a drainage plan will not be needed at this time. Uh, the CZ conditional zoning classification works to allow uses in unique locations or transitional sites between different land uses. Staff is in, in support of the request, as long as there is no outside storage of auction items, and believes that the proposed use could be a positive reuse of the former school property, that otherwise may continue to be mostly vacant and eventually fall in disrepair. Therefore, staff recommends the request by John Christman to rezone approximately 2.68 acres from R2 One and Two Family Residence District to R2 CZ conditional zoning district, to allow for the development of an auction facility, art studio spaces, and continued use of religious facility located at seventeen twenty-one, seventeen twenty-nine Mulberry Street, be approved for the following reasons. The proposed rezone would work to utilize a former, mostly vacant former school building, while also limiting the commercial uses, so it does not jeopardize or harm the residential neighborhood surrounding the site, and subject to the following conditions, that there is no outside storage on the former school site or the parking lots in the south, uh, that the property be limited to an auction facility, art studio spaces, and continue use, continued use of a religious facility, and that sidewalk be installed along Vinton Street, south of Mulberry Street.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff?
Yes, I have a question. What is the site's, let's see if I have this question written down correctly. Uh, what, what is the site's, um, historical preservation status, and will that affect ability to make any changes to the facility or building or inside of it, you know?
I'm not aware of any, oh, actually, John runs the historic preservation. He could probably speak to that.
The, um, building has a historic significance, a C, which is basically, has, it is not, um, historically significant at this time, although it was surveyed back in nineteen eighty-seven, so it's a little hard to say how it would be today, so. But is, at this time, it's not considered historically significant.
Okay. So, because it doesn't have that status, you can make whatever changes the applicant would like to make to the building without...
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Schrader with staff. Even if it was, um, a historic structure, as a privately-owned property, there would, unless it's specifically in a, um, locally designated historic district, which it is not, um, there would be limited restrictions that, you know, we could place on, that, you know, a private property owner can still do a lot with their own property, so. But this one's not specifically listed. I just wanted to point that out. Even if it was, they could still make changes to it.
Okay. Thank you.
He's not proposing any changes to the exterior, but...
Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. Is the applicant here, or someone representing the applicant, that would like to make the comment? Okay. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to comment either for or against this? Please come to the podium, give us your name and address, and...
William Heath, two oh five Ray Street. And, uh, I live right beside the playground there, and, uh, well, what we was concerned about, he did address some of it, where stuff wasn't put outside, like at some of the other places around by our house. That, uh, looks pretty nasty from people just having stuff everywhere. But, um, then, another thing I was wondering, like, if they rezoned it, would they be able to, uh, build houses or apartment, or anything over there on that, uh, parking lot?
Um, the, the rezoning, excuse me, is still gonna say, stay residential, and the conditional zoning, the CZ part of it, means that what, if, if his request is approved today, that's all that can be done. Uh, if there's any changes or any different requests, it would have to come back before this commission to be reviewed.
Okay. Yeah. I'm all for making the, uh, neighborhood nice, so.
Yep. And the applicant is here now.
Okay. The applicant would like to come forward on the, uh, seventeen twenty-one Mulberry Street issue. If there, if there was anything you'd like to say, we've already had staff report.
Well, I apologize for coming in late. Um, I heard one of the concerns about the area being cluttered with stuff from outside, and that is totally not my intent. Uh, I, I believe in beautifying neighborhoods and improving the property. Um, and I would love to work with neighbors in, in that regard. Um, I don't, I don't intend on having a, a business that's open to retail traffic with regular hours. Um, it would be by appointment only that I would see people. Um, I don't know, was there any other concerns that I need to address? My, uh, my business in, in auctioneering, I've been doing it for, for forty years, and I don't know if any of you remember Jackson Auction Company, H. James, Jim Jackson, but I started with him forty years ago. And we, uh, we did inside auctions in a facility on Lincoln Street in Cedar Falls, and we kept that area clean, even when we were doing normal household and estate auctions. But, that's not my goal. I don't want to sell used furniture. I don't want to sell appliances and that sort of thing. Um, since I retired from Jackson's International at the first of the year, my business focus has been entirely online auctions, and that's selling and shipping small items, which, which I really enjoy rather than moving furniture. And, so, no, there's no, there's no intentions at all in having anything outside.
This is Tyson. Mr. Christman, uh, wonderful site you got there. Uh, you mentioned in here that it continued use as a religious facility. Is the church still there? Are they moving, are they gonna be there?
They, they were gonna disband, they're gonna sell the property and disband. Um, I told them that I would like to lease the church back to them. And if they aren't, uh, if they still wanted to span, then my goal would be find another church to run it to.
Okay. All right, thank you.
This is Butch. I would just like to commend you for the ideas that you've brought forth, and especially the art part as well. Being a former artist, that just really excited me, so.
Well, I'm, uh, I was trained as a commercial photographer, and, yeah, I, I understand the space, uh, could be well, well-used for artists, and, uh, especially if we had a, a community gathering room, or something like that, where they can share ideas. But, uh, right now, the biggest obstacle I have, probably, in converting this place, um, is, is the current heating system, the boiler that's in the place. And that's one of the reasons why I think they put the property up for sale, and why they may be disbanding, is because of the, the constant maintenance costs that they're putting into this system. It's, uh, they're just applying Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid on top of it, and I think that's really draining them financially. Um, so that's, uh, that's a major expense, and unfortunately, this is a boiler that's older than I am, and the life expectancy of these is really about forty, forty-five years for this type, and it's, it's going on, it's over sixty years old. So if that fails, and they can't do anything about it, um, the, the property's gonna go downhill very fast, because that's an expensive, uh, replacement.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this issue, this item, rather? Okay, seeing no one, unless there's discussion amongst commissioners, we'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, this is Tyson. I'd like to make a recommendation that, uh, our board consider the staff request, uh, in conjunction with the request by Mr. Christman to rezone approximately 2.68 acres from R2 One and Two Family Resident District to R2 CZ, conditional zoning district, to allow for the development of an auction facility, art, studio spaces, and continued use of a religious facility located at seventeen twenty-one and seventeen twenty-nine Mulberry Street, be approved for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning would work to utilize the former, mostly vacant former school building, while also limiting the commercial uses, so it does not jeopardize or harm the residential neighborhood surrounding the site, and subject to the following conditions, that there is no outside storage on the former school site or the parking lot to the south, that the property be limited to an auction facility, art studio spaces, and continued use of a religious facility. That sidewalk is installed along Vinton Street, south of Mulberry Street.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, we'll, we'll entertain, or we'll vote on it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Special permit, request by Abdullah Skirk, Skirkich and Jamat Kuser for a special permit to convert eighteen hundred and eighty square feet of retail space into a religious facility within a, located within a C2 commercial district at nineteen forty-five East Mitchell Avenue. And we do have a revised report on that, so. Staff report.
I can just let you know, on the back of it is a letter from the land, the landowner, um, saying that he's, he knows the applicant well, and supports this application. The applicant is requesting to convert eighteen hundred and eighty square feet of retail space into a religious facility. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding area, as the area's part of the Steel Smith Shopping Center with a U-Haul facility located to the west of the property. The proposed request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The property is located on East Mitchell, which is a minor arterial, and La Porte Road, which classifies as a collector. It is also adjacent to the intersection of US Highway two eighteen. The nearest recreational trail is US two eighteen Trail, located point five nine miles to the north. Currently, there's no sidewalks in the area, although the city will be starting a study this year, um, looking at the long-term future of La Porte Road. A sidewalk will be required along Mitchell Avenue. The property in question is Zone C2 Commercial District, has been zoned as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Um, surrounding land uses and their zoning to the north and south is commercial businesses, Zone C2 Commercial District. To the east is La Porte Road and US Highway two eighteen, and to the west is a storage facility, Zone Z2 Commercial District, and single-family residence, Zone R2 One and Two Family Residence District. The area consists of commercial businesses to the north, built between nineteen fifty-eight and two thousand and eleven. A storage facility to the west, built in nineteen seventy-eight. Homes along Mitchell, built in the late nineteen... Homes along Mitchell built in the late nineteen fifties and commercial to the south built between two nineteen fifty-eight and two thousand and one. The applicant is requesting a special permit to convert eighteen hundred and eighty square feet of retail space into religious facility. Located within a C two Commercial District. Although the location is primarily commercial area, a church can be located in a within any zoning district upon approval of a special permit. The zoning ordinance requires religious facilities have one parking space for every four persons of maximum occupancy. Of the sanctuary auditorium or main hall as provided by the current adopted building code. According to the latest estimate submitted by the applicant, the worship area will include eleven hundred and fifty-five square feet. Estimating occupancy of one person per seven square feet gives an estimate estimated occupancy of a hundred and sixty-five. Which would translate into a need for forty-one parking spaces. The rest of the complex, not including the restaurant, has approximately twenty thousand and two hundred and five square feet. Of customer use areas, which requires eighty-one parking spaces. The Shapala's Restaurant, which has eighty thirty-eight hundred square feet of customer use areas, which requires thirty-eight parking spots. Creating a total need of a hundred and sixty-eight parking spots and currently the um complex has a hundred and sixty-three spaces. It does not appear that the request would have a negative impact on community and the space has been empty for some time. Therefore, staff would recommend the approval of the request for a special permit to convert eighteen hundred and eighty square feet of retail space into a religious facility for the following reasons. The request is is an area Zone C two Commercial District, would not appear to have negative impacts surrounding neighborhood. It would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or vehicular traffic in the area. With the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera. Including but not limited to buffers, parking, drainage, landscaping, except as approved by the Board of Adjustment. And that a sidewalk be constructed along Mitchell Avenue between the two driveways that um go out onto Mitchell.
Any questions for staff?
Um, I have a question. Did the revised staff report answer the question from staff about the parking concerns of as?
Yes, as mentioned.
The space ratio?
Yes, as mentioned in my staff report, there they meet the parking requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, John. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this item? I actually back up, I should ask first, is the applicant in the room? Would you like to say anything? Okay, now, is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Okay. Uh, we'll entertain discussion amongst commissioners or a motion.
I'd like to, this is Butch and I would like to make a motion that we approve the permit requested by those two guys. For special permit to convert eighteen hundred and eighty square foot of retail space into a religious facility. Located within a C two Commercial District located at nineteen forty-five East Mitchell Avenue with the following conditions. That the site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to buffers, parking, drainage, landscaping, et cetera. Except as approved by Board of Adjustment and that is number two, that a sidewalk be constructed along Mitchell Avenue between the two driveways.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, there is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That's carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a request by the City of Waterloo for a minor plaid of parcels B and C. Of Triangle Terrace subdivision located adjacent to fifty fifty Folk Road for the purpose of creating a two-lot residential subdivision.
This is Andrew Staff. You may remember last month this was before you for the rezone to uh R two. Uh, just briefly go over. Um, I mean essentially the lots are there, but we want to have this done as a minor plaid as a subdivision. Uh, one lot is a half acre in size and one lot is point five four acres in size for a total area of one point oh four acres. Uh, which is adjacent to fifty fifty Folk Road. As noted, it has is going through the rezone process to reason from A one to R two. Uh, area mostly is comprised of aggregate uses and residential uses. And with the exception of Lloyd Randall Park to the west. Um, two lots are located within the zone AE Hundred Year Floodplain. And any homes that wouldn't uh be built there would need to meet all floodplain regulations. Future land use map classifies the area as low-density residential. And the proposed lot sizes and area and dimension meet all the requirements of the R two zoning district. There is a fifteen-foot recreational trail easement shown parallel to the north lot line along East Shalas Road on parcel B. Um, so staff is recommending uh that the minor plaid of the two properties of a half acre and point five four acres. For a total of one point oh four acres, uh, next to fifty fifty Folk Road be approved for the following reasons. Uh, the minor replat request would not appear to negatively impact the surrounding area and future residential uses would be consistent with residential development in the area. Uh, would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or traffic conditions within the area. It is in conformance with a future land use map and comp client plan for this area, which is classified as low-density residential. And for this would create two uh buildable parcels for new home construction in the future.
Okay, are there any questions for staff? Thank you. Uh, is the applicant? Well, I guess the applicant's here, but. Does anybody want to say anything? Anything else? Anybody on staff? Okay. We can entertain if, well, is there anybody here to speak either for or against this item? Okay. And entertain a motion. If there's no further discussion.
I'll make a motion to uh approve the minor plaid of two properties of point five and point five four acres for a total of one point oh four. One point oh four acres will get to the north and south of abutting fifty fifty Folk Road. That's it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That's carried. Our next item is vacation request by the City of Waterloo to vacate a twenty-five foot by three hundred foot. Seventy-five hundred square foot portion of the fifteen hundred block of Bluff Street right of way located between West Thirteenth and West Fourteenth Streets. We have staff report.
Okay, uh, this is Heiberg with the staff report. Uh, it's just simply a request by a city of Waterloo to vacate approximately seventy-five hundred square feet of Bluff Street right of way. Uh, located between West Thirteenth Street and West Fourteenth Street. Uh, the request to vacate the portion of Bluff Street would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood as the area is mostly vacant. With some residential homes in the vacate area is not needed for public street purposes. Uh, the request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular traffic in the area due to the fact that the. It is adjacent to the Iowa Northern Railroad and there are no sidewalks along the vacate area. Um, the site has been zoned M one light industrial district since the adoption of zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-one. Uh, surrounding areas just primarily consist of commercial and residential and Iowa Northern Railroad. Uh, the area is not located in a floodplain as identified by the flood insurance rate map. Uh, there are no known utilities within the vacate area. Bluff Street does however have a twelve-inch sewer line. South of the vacate area, but there's no sewer line within the actual vacate area itself. Uh, the request to vacate Bluff Street would not appear to negatively affect the area or traffic conditions. The role of Bluff was generally diminished with the construction of US Highway two eighteen into an expressway in the nineteen nineties. All buildings on the west side of Bluff were demolished with few buildings remaining on the east side of the street. Several sections of the street have already been vacated in the area. Uh, the northern part of Bluff Street to Sixteenth Street was vacated in two sections by ordinance three nine seven seven. On uh, October eleventh nineteen ninety-three and ordinance four one five one. On February fifth nineteen ninety-six, the portion of Bluff Street, south of seventeenth to Seventeenth Street was vacated by ordinance four two nine eight. On on five twenty-six nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, the request for vacation of the uh of the northern of the twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet on the northern side of Bluff Street. Adjacent to three two six West Seventeenth Street was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. On uh, November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, but the vacation request isn't has not gone to City Council as of yet. Uh, for subdivision ordinance, yeah, there are no plating required in relation to the request. Is therefore the staff recommendation, therefore staff recommends request to vacate seventy-five hundred square feet of Bluff Street be approved for the following reasons. Request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. That's Heiberg with the staff report.
Okay, I I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, my question was, when it said that the um Planning and Zoning Commission approved, uh, recommended to approve on. Um, November of twenty seventeen, why did the vacate request never go to the City Council and go through the entire process?
Oh, yeah, um, this is Schrader with staff. Uh, the applicant uh has not met the sale of property policy. They were um requesting to purchase it for a dollar. Um, and it doesn't meet the sale of property policy, so it's been kind of sitting in limbo until further discussions of how they propose to meet the sale of property policy. So when it comes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the price issue isn't part of the discussion. It's just whether or not it's, you know, needed for road purposes or if easements need to be retained. The the price part of it is a policy issue that the council deals with.
And the applicant is the city itself, right?
For this one, that's the adjacent portion of the street that was being requested by an adjoining property owner.
Okay, so um, that that was basically my question. So is it, is it um tabled at this point where the vacation hasn't been considered? The vacate request hasn't been considered by City Council? Is that just because it's on hold or tabled?
It's it's not tabled because it hasn't actually been presented to the council yet. Um, it's on hold pending the request complying with the sale of property policy.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Why are we vacating this? Is someone purchasing it or?
This is Schrader with staff. So this particular section, uh, the city is proposing to vacate it essentially in preparation. Uh, of or for encouragement of a future development project, but there is currently no development project pending. The City of Waterloo recently obtained ownership of the house that's at the corner there that adjoins a portion. Of the area to be vacated through the uh six fifty-seven A process for uh dilapidated and abandoned structures. So we now own that structure. Uh, we don't own the other vacant land uh adjacent to there, but there is vacant land. So we do feel that it creates good redevelopment potential. The section of street just really isn't needed for street purposes. So we thought in in kind of helping to potentially encourage a future redevelopment of the area. Uh, vacating the street now would kind of put more ground that could go with a redevelopment.
Would think you'd wanna, if you're gonna redevelop that area, you'd want to have a street in there, but.
This is Schrader with staff. Um, it it just, the the best method of development in looking at how the other. Um, segments adjacent to Bluff Street have developed. They've all focused off of those side streets uh and either not utilized Bluff at all. Or utilized it more as like a private drive type.
Okay.
Setting rather than a public street.
This is, this is Butch and you can probably answer this then too. So will that, so in looking at the pictures, will that still be somewhere where people can drive down or is that gonna be barricaded off or?
Um, this is Schrader with staff again. That question was raised at tech and we indicated we would discuss that with the Public Works. Um, I don't think the city has any plans to physically remove the portion of of roadway that's there. Um, but if it is vacated, you know, that that certainly would be an option to put some barricades up to stop through traffic. I don't think it gets a significant amount of through traffic anymore since, you know, that house is about to be demolished, is owned by the city now and about to be demolished.
Thank you.
It's it's more of an alley.
I was just gonna say, two cars can't go down that anyway, yeah.
Okay. Uh, this is Mehe. Uh, there is a center parcel in here. Does the city own that center parcel? It looks like it's gonna be losing any point of access.
It it's owned by the same property owner that owns the other corner parcel.
And they don't have any. Questions or concerns about this request?
They have not raised any, no.
I missed that part. Who owns that center parcel?
So if you.
It's not the applicant. Yeah, it's not the applicant, City of Waterloo, but all of this vacant land here is owned by one private individual. They were provided notice, you know, and it would be the potential for all of that area to be, you know, including. The area being vacated to potentially be redeveloped.
You would still have access off of what thirteenth street?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Okay, seeing no one, well, if there's no further discussion amongst commissioners, we'll entertain a motion.
This is Tyson. Um, I'd like to make a motion that the board consider the staff recommendation to vacate seven thousand five hundred square feet of Bluff Street. Be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicle or pedestrian traffic in the area.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That's carried. Thank you. Now we come to discussion items. Are there any?
So I have a, I just have a question for, it's not discussion necessarily, but when would the item that would that was stricken from this agenda? When would that come up? Would that come up next month?
I would, this is Schrader with staff. I would anticipate that it will come back up next month. There was um concern raised by the traffic engineer and the applicant had just not had an opportunity to address those concerns. So they asked to withdraw it from this month, but I think it would be their intent to try and address those concerns with the traffic engineer and and have the request back on next month.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no further discussion or discussion items, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
We are adjourned.